All the apartments.
I don't want to keep the public waiting anymore. I see it's at 7:00 PM. We will call the planning, the meeting to order for the Charter Township of Garfield Planning Commission for August 28th, 2024, and the first item is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call members, are you guys going to do that?
Yes, I will do that. Agustinelli?
Here.
Robertson is absent, excused. Racine?
Here.
DeGud is absent and excused. Fudge?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
McManus.
Here. All right, well, item one on the agenda is public comment. I don't know that I, unless somebody in the board wants to make public comment. All right, come on up.
Come on, Michael.
So we'll open public comment and close public comment. So next item is review and approval of the agenda and any conflicts of interest. If you have any conflicts now would be time to state those.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion made and supported, approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing now, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Minutes, August 14th.
I have a...
Anything anybody would like to comment on or change?
Under item five, reports where we were talking about the beta and the, and the housing part of it, we're referencing the Garfield Township Building Code. What the town board decided on was the State of Michigan Building Code, not the Garfield Township Building Code.
That was the second meeting we had.
It's the Michigan Building Code as adopted by the township.
We could say it that way too, but it's not our code.
Correct.
So change the wording to define the Michigan Building Code as adopted by Garfield Township?
Yeah.
Sound okay?
Yep.
Any other comments or corrections on the minutes?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as listed with the, with the addition of as adopted.
On the Michigan Building Code?
By the Michigan Building Code.
Support.
Motion made and supported for approve the minutes with the, with the addition of the language that it's the Michigan Building Code that was accepted as adopted by the township. Any other further discussion on that motion? Hearing now, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I guess the good news is before they moved in, they did have walls up, so.
They did, yes.
So, you know, even though.
Moved right along.
It was redefined and contrary to the discussion of the, those involved, that they did have walls up before they moved in, so I guess we all won, so. All right, correspondence?
Correspondence, yep.
Did we have the letter? This was from, on behalf of the Planning Commission to the city, Traverse City regarding the master plan and their mobility action plan, so that, we just wanted to provide that.
Summarizing the comments from the July study session.
Right.
Yep.
Right. And I see what, I noticed in the, somebody else, we announced last week what Elmwood or somebody's doing theirs now too, or?
I believe so, yeah, Elmwood.
Yes, we got a notice from Elmwood.
Must be master plan season, everybody's doing theirs. We got ours done.
I think they're the only ones we had yet to hear from, yeah. That was the last one, so.
Okay, reports, Avali, anything from the town board?
Oh, yeah. We are excited to say we have four candidates for the manager's position that are remaining, and we will have interviews with them on the 5th, starting at 1:00, and you're all welcome to come and watch them, public.
Are they local or?
Uh, one local, two southern Michigan, and one from out of state.
Okay. All right, Planning Commissioners, ZBA, Bob, anything?
No meeting.
No meeting. Chris is not here, so nothing from Parks and Rec, unless you guys have anything on Parks and Rec?
Uh, there's no meeting, although there was a article in the paper yesterday about the Copper Ridge Trailhead that was discussed at the last Parks and Rec meeting, so that is kind of progressing along into its next steps, so.
Looks good there. All right, Joint Planning Commission, have you had anything?
I think we reported in the past about our July 15th meeting, and there hasn't been one and won't be one till mid-October.
Mid-October, right. Okay, thank you, John. Staff, anything from staff?
I don't have anything major. It's been fairly quiet in the department in terms of new applications, but I just wanted to point out something in follow-up regarding the Township Board's decision related to the Beta project. We have another project, Marengo, which is commercial district housing development that was approved by the Planning Commission almost three years ago, and then they came back for an extension and they received the extension, and they need to start that project and have substantial construction done by December 6th of this year. Otherwise, the, the special use permit that was granted will expire. Since we don't have a definition for substantial construction, yet the board did make that note in terms of start of construction, we have used that in terms of, at least for the time being, as a way to identify what substantial construction is. In other words, they do need to get the foundations in at least in that project in order to keep that special use permit going.
Okay. Have they been notified of that?
Yes.
Do we want to have some specific definitions for those things?
I think for the term substantial construction, I think it would be helpful because that is where we, in the ordinance, it's only mentioned four times, but it talks about in order for a permit to remain valid, that has to occur, the substantial construction, not the start, but substantial. And in researching around, it's, it's a fairly common legal term that's used in some cases I've seen where it says that 25% of the project cost has to be expended. So it's, might be something that we look at in terms of seeing what might best fit for our community, but I think it would be helpful because we have seen projects, this isn't the only project that, you know, was approved, come back for a one-year extension, and then after that, if it's, hasn't started and met that threshold, then it, that permit or that approval becomes void, which is, I think, important because we can have potentially projects happening in that case where they approve and, and then they don't start. So I think it would be a good idea to maybe at least look at, at least that term substantial construction.
Did we have staff send us some recommendations?
Sure, we can do that.
Yeah.
It's a place to get started, anyway.
Yeah.
And we talked a little bit about this when I was in your office the other day, and I, I would like us to see, I, I've never liked to depend on somebody else to do our work for us, and I really don't want to lean back on the state building code. It's been talked about how outdated it is and everything, but it's all we have, so I would like us to see, would like us to see some, would like to see us create some real specific definitions for our ordinance, like construction, because there was no question through the months and years of negotiation with Beta and the Housing Commission what our intent was when we said construction. We used the term walls up many times, and, and they had understanding of that. And in the 11th hour, then, well, we moved some dirt out here, and let's call that construction. You know, to me, that was excavation. Where we're past that, we'll get over that bridge, but it, you know, for every, every moment like that, and it needs to be a teaching moment, it needs to be a time to say, okay, let's learn, we learned our lesson. Like I said to the town board, they, they threw unby us, they got a fastball by us, okay? Let's not let that happen again, all right? In this case, we were, we were least vindicated in facting our walls up, and that was our ultimate goal, was to ensure that the project, if we saw walls up, we knew the project was probably going to happen. But, you know, construction, vertical construction I've heard, substantial construction I've heard, is, as we, and I say we, because I think I've got about six meetings left, okay, on the board, I think we need to really be careful, you know, and really do diligence when we put a condition like that in that we're clear, is crystal clear what our expectations are, you know? If we had have put in there, as I watched the, the meeting, I watched the tape of the ultimate meeting, we approved this project, and we talked about, you know, putting a percentage of the building completed and so on, and I sat right here in this more, at that meeting, and I said, you know, in two years, when Beta can't move in that building, I want them to explain to the record eagle, why not us? And then here we turned around, we had to explain why they couldn't move in, exactly what two years and six months later was stated right here. So we can't, you know, cross our i's and, cross our t's and dot our i's enough to ensure that these things happen, because with the PUD, this one in particular, you know, there's always a use that's allowed by, pretty much by right, along with a use that's probably not allowed by right, and this is a perfect example of that. So maybe we rewrite our ordinance to say the use that's by right goes in first. We even put that in our PUD ordinance, I don't know, but what can we do to ensure that we don't get stuck? And I think it's important, so. Definitions is a great start.
Yeah.
I think looking at the whole PUD part of our ordinance might be, you know, something.
And the definitions might even be in an area that's broader than the PUD, like.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Remember whether Marengo's a PUD or just a special use or something or other, but the definitions ought to apply anywhere where it's a potential ambiguity, that's just a disaster waiting to happen, having ambiguity, so the more we can be clear, I think that's a perfectly great idea that we.
Yeah, I, I like the, we have that term in there, substantial construction, I think that's a really good start, because I think that should be at, at a minimum, whatever that definition becomes, is applied, and then it's helpful to have those should we come across another situation where they were applying conditions to an approval, those, you know, we actually have those kind of standards in place through those definitions.
And just use those terms right in the conditions.
And we want, I think it's a really important, when we always look at, when we look at zoning language, that it should be measured some, some way, some way to easily, it's very clear that it's measurable, it's not, you know, subjective to interpretation or anything, and it's, you can quantify.
Right.
Whatever that is, that condition, so it makes it a lot easier for whether it's a zoning administrator, planning commission, whatever, it, it's, it's easily to be understood by everybody.
And that RDO, if we put in that, you know, one of the housing buildings needs to be occupied, it would have clarified real quick that the building had to be up and be occupied, but we, we kept backing off of what our requirements were, and we finally settled on the fact of, well, if the buildings are going up, there's pretty sure a thing it's going to happen, but it was, as I watched that meeting, you pay attention more when you're watching than when you're here probably, but, you know, it was like Chris, Chris DeGud asked a lot of good questions. It was the first time he had been involved in a PUD, and so if you get new members, they probably never written a PUD before, whatever, and I don't know how many more we'll have. And it was kind of funny, because he said, well, you, you know, you didn't tell, I kind of paraphrased Chris DeGud, he said, if we have a development where it's a housing, it's a PUD with a housing and McDonald's, we wouldn't let McDonald's be built till the housing? And I think John and I said, you know, simultaneously, no, we wouldn't, that's exactly the point of a PUD, you know, and he was surprised by that, but I think it was a learning moment that, well, yeah, because if, well, what I said, and that, I mean, it depends on what the underlying zoning of the, of the property is. If it's zoned residential, then absolutely not, the residential should go in first before the McDonald's does, okay? If it's commercial, yeah, the McDonald's can go in and then the housing, but, so there's a lot of, a lot of things that are in play there, but great, great questions, and I think we needed, good, good thing to work on, so.
Well, beginning construction is different than substantial construction, is different than completed construction, and, you know, those, when we start defining those things, what is that? You know, does that mean the roof's on? And that's what it means.
Yep.
And that's it. So if we use this term, that's what's there.
I couldn't agree more, and it, and ultimately, for those who weren't there, it was the found, it was the footings, it was the footings and slab that made a difference. I mean, the excavation work and drainage and parking lots did not constitute construction and don't under the state ordinance, but the footings and a slab did. And so they, by the time they got footings and walls up, then Beta was moving in, so everybody seems to be happy, so. And they're, and they're using it, so they're already in it, so. All right, anyway, if that's all, I see your, your report in here, and I see some stuff on our next meeting we're going to get updates on, so. I guess under unfinished business, A, we have Planning Department Report 2024-68, which is the zoning ordinance for short-term rentals, continue discussion on that, so. Who's going to handle this one?
Yeah, I'm going to cover this. So just following up, I was not present for your conversation last study session in the end of July covering this, but just wanted to kind of give you an update, there really isn't any action at the state level right now regarding the legislation. At this point, they're still sitting in committee, they haven't been voted out of committee, and again, if they aren't voted out or taken action by the end of this year, then it, the legislation goes away, the session closes, and a new session will start at the beginning of 2025, and it'll have to be reintroduced. Just wanted to, there were some discussions, Steve took some notes last meeting, we're just kind of following it up, in terms of how the approach would be and, and the definition of short-term rentals would, would match the legislation, we're talking about locating, if this were to be required, essentially mandated, where we could not prohibit the outright ban of short-term rentals by the township, which we currently do, then it would be to allow them in the, as a commercial district housing development, so that is a defined type of development, it's a special use permit currently in three districts, the general commercial and highways, special use permit, and then it's by right in the planned shopping center. Just in comparison, hotels and motels are permitted in those districts, but not by special use permit, so somebody could build a hotel or motel in those, which is, in our, in our eyes are essentially similar to a, a short-term rental. So just looking in comparison, so if somebody did, and that would have to be, to be established, so it wouldn't be able to, let's say you have a house, a non-conforming house of some sort in a CG district, general commercial district, you wouldn't be able to convert that over to a short-term rental. You would have to do it as a commercial district housing development, which would require a special use permit process by the Township Planning Commission, so that's where we're, we're locating them in there, is strictly in commercial district housing development. I did want to just also follow up on that too, is we did not really consider them to be in commercial portions of PUDs. That could be done at some point, we wanted to think about that if we ever go down this path, that might be, I would just think of recently, the Olson PUD over there on Long Lake Road, where they converted some of those apartments, excuse me, the office space to apartments. Under our proposal, that would not have been permitted to be short-term rentals, they potentially could have identified that as part of the PUD, but we don't really address them being permitted as, in the PUDs, but that could be something, could be done in the future. We do it strictly as a commercial district housing development and meeting the standards There is also the licensing part of it, it just includes, just for your information, the licensing ordinance is a very rough draft at this point, it's not, that's where we want to be if we were to have to do this, but it's, it's just a, kind of a placeholder, should we kind of go down that path. We didn't see the need at this point to go into it too deeply, there were some questions over if a licensee could be an individual owner or company or other, some form of ownership, and that would be the case. These would be, under this, at least initial rough draft, would be an annual license with a annual inspection, so that would have to occur. There is no limit per development or parcel, but that could be something that could be considered. Again, our thought is that if they are in these really already kind of limited districts in terms of the, the commercial districts, it didn't really seem to be a need. I do know the communities that do limit the number of them overall are one of the ones that are, that tends to be very challenging. But I think the, the bottom line at this point is that we're not seeing any action at the state level, so at this point, we don't really think there's a need to pursue any of this right now, more than what we've just kind of put this as an, an idea, it gives us kind of backup, should we be forced to require them, we believe there will be sufficient time to allow for conformance to, that communities, if they have to put something, you know, as a mandate from the state, then, then we would have to, it would certainly give us time to incorporate that through the proper zoning ordinances as well as creation of a licensed ordinance, which is a police power ordinance by the Township Board, so. And I do have in there just the map that shows where those three districts are, those are our primary commercial, it's the general commercial, the dark red, highway commercial, that purple, then the pink is the planned shopping center. Local commercial or commercial office would not be included.
What's that little piece on top of Green Hill where the grocery, the party store is, is that not commercial?
It's local commercial.
Local commercial.
Local commercial, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I, I agree with your thoughts, John, that if it's not moving in Lansing, we don't need to spend hours of meetings upon meetings working on this now. Just a couple of quick questions. I was wondering what the source was for this placeholder ordinance, as you're calling it, did you guys come up with this or Jim?
No.
Get it someplace else?
We got it from another municipality.
Okay. I would think if we have to look into this somewhere down the road, well, I guess that's my second question, do we even look at this? It's a police power ordinance, I don't remember the Planning Commission working on police power ordinances, does the town board?
It's the town board thing, so it really wouldn't be.
We wouldn't even be dealing with this at this board, ever, would we?
Well, except to establish, if, if the state legislature came down and said you have to have it somewhere, we, we have to find a place for it to be.
Yeah, I agree on as far as which districts would it be allowed, but, but the police power licensing ordinance, we wouldn't be involved with the Planning Commission.
The licensing wouldn't come through here.
No, it'd go straight to the Township Board, but it is helpful to have the context, you know, because they, they are companion pieces.
Yeah, okay.
Your primary focus, yes, would be the zoning ordinance, this is just more for understanding that there would be.
Got it.
A supplemental piece to it, that, yes, the, police power is more about activity, zoning is about use, so the, the comfort in this is to know that should, the problem with just keeping it as a zoning ordinance requirement is once it's established, it runs with the land, and it's really hard to provide, you know, assurances that they meet all the requirements and so forth, it's hard to monitor something like that, particularly when there's problems and complaints. The licensing thing is, their only good is their current license, and so that gives us the ability, the Township Board the ability, should there be problems, while there's the ability to say you're not meeting their licensing requirements, and that can be easily revoked, a lot easier than trying to rescind a special use permit or something like that, so. They kind of work in concert with each other, so it's really just for reference at this point.
Makes good sense.
I'm hopeful that, that portion, we don't have to deal with this, it's kind of nice not having to deal with them at all, quite honestly.
Is it, is it just currently stalled in Lansing, or just nobody's pushing it down the road?
I, I think it's probably, could be, you know, election year type thing, you know, going through budget, and it's not to say it won't happen, it might happen in that kind of lame duck session after the elections, it.
Yeah.
It seems to me that once, you know, budget takes over and then elections, it's, yeah, but it's, it hasn't even moved out of committee, so, and there isn't any companion piece in the Senate, so that, you know, you'd have to have the concurrence or the, the tie, tie bar bill with the Senate as well, so we'll see.
Well, I think there's, it's, when it first came out, it was a big rah rah rah, let's go with this deal, but now communities have tried it, and some of them, it hasn't worked out very well for them.
Yeah.
And so I think that word is getting out there too, what do you do about housing then? Well, if you're going to, you know, complain about not having enough housing, and then you do this, well, then you don't have housing, so. Communities, I think, are not putting as much pressure on the legislature to do it, the realtors particularly.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I haven't seen anything in like MTA, that was, it was like a, one of the weekly insights back in the spring that kind of kickstarted bringing it, because I haven't heard anything in any of that or any communication from them lately, so I know they monitor everything pretty closely.
Yeah, we rely on MTA to kind of give us some of the assistance and guidance, so, yes.
Got it on that one?
That's it.
Okay.
So we'll just, at this point, we don't intend to bring it back, it's just, I mean, I think we just kind of have a good sense, we'll just keep this, should this be, we'll bring it back should we need to do it in the future, but you, you won't see it on future agendas at this time.
If we needed to act fast, we could.
You got time to react?
Yeah, the, I would, the zoning, the zoning portion takes longer, the licensing ordinance by the board can be barely quickly, but it would, it would probably take a couple months to do it just to meet our legal public hearing requirements.
Thanks for the update on that. Next item is Planning Department Report 2024-69, zoning ordinance signs and continued discussion on that.
We have Steve kind of cover this, I will also be covering some of these things as well, but I'll let him start off.
It's everyone's favorite topic, signs, regulations.
John's favorite.
But, yeah, this, again, for the background, we've discussed, there's a couple study sessions, some of the impetus is some of these US Supreme Court cases from the past five to 10 years, talking about how communities can regulate signs, focusing on what they call content-based regulations, and trying to limit and remove all, as many content-based regulations as possible, focus on things that we would call time, place, and manner, like the size, the setback, other aspects, so. We called this, like, we put in quote, a first pass at this, because there's, you could spend all day on this if we really wanted to, but to start taking a, start taking a stab at like what are the, what we saw is like the most readily visible content, content-based language, try to turn it into something content neutral, there's kind of one or two sections we really focused on in this pass, which you'll see, this is a, attached as a track changes version of Section 630 of the ordinance, so this is us just kind of going through it, and I don't want to go through it word for word, but, but kind of a couple of big things, and we also wanted to throw out a couple ideas, not necessarily content-based, but since we're looking at the sign regulations, a couple of things that have come up, so. One of the biggest things, just put content neutral language throughout the entire Section 630. Two things in the section, the CP District and Plan Development, so we've looked at this a couple times in the last couple of years, when we kind of combined these two sections, we looked at it when there was signs proposed at Cherryland Center, we looked at it a couple different places. One of them, that was actually at your previous meeting, was a directional sign, the approved for the Thurlby Clinic at Copper Ridge, that was two weeks ago, which was pretty straightforward, although we also noted that it, based on the current language, it needed Plan Commission approval as like a directional sign, and looking into the history of the signed ordinance, there was, used to be like these called sign plans in PUD that goes back a little ways, and that language is no longer in the ordinance, so that has been kind of removed. I think the idea was also, at least when I looked at it, was if you like figure out all the signage when you're reviewing a PUD, which you review anyway, if you have a sense of where they're going, I think that's why I like the directional signs was coming to Planning Commission, because if they did that at the same time as the PUD, it would have all just been part of the same approval. have all just been part of the same approval. But since this came later, in this case, much later for Copper Ridge, it was sort of the standalone, very small directional sign on a wall that was its own approval. So we actually put, would you want to allow administrative review for playing director to up to six of those, just as sort of a, allow that to be an administrative function and if there's more, kind of have that kind of more thorough review of it or keep it the way it is. And the other one we put in there was the provision allowing for the modifications to the wall sign standards. We have looked at that before as well. That's the one that allows up to 50% increase, but no more than 50%, and there's other kind of provisions for it. And there's been a few applicants for that. TJ Maxx was the most recent one earlier this year. The idea of removing it was just looking back at the history of that and seeing like there were several that were denied in a row, and we were looking, were there, were there any that were actually approved? And was there any scenario where like one would be likely to be approved? I mean, if so, or does that section need to be modified, just sort of as is, though, and seeing the recent history, it's, should we keep that in? Should we remove it if there's not likely to be anything that would be approved under that section?
My recollection of that, and John, correct me wrong, is like the conditions were so strict, it was like no way anybody could ever get it approved, you know?
Right now, you know, a hundred square foot sign is a, is a fairly large sign.
Right.
And, you know, when we look at like Value City, they got reduced back to, you know, when the art van sign was removed, they're a hundred square feet. They seem to be doing kind of fine. Hobby Lobby, they tried to get a larger one and they're, you know, almost a thousand feet back away from 31 and they're doing fine. And I, it's just, I think, looking at it going, okay, you know, we get, most recently, the TJ Maxx one, they didn't want to do 50%, they want to do like 26%, but the reality is it's a wall sign, they, most of them will have a freestanding sign to supplement that. So it, I don't, and quite frankly, I don't know if large signs is that critical on the wall, it's so much, it's, it's almost like the freestanding sign is probably more important as you're driving along, looking for a location, but once you get to the site, you see the building. Now, sometimes the building wall sign does function in the same way that the wall sign, or excuse me, the freestanding sign does, but I think a hundred square feet is, quite frankly, is big enough. I don't, I just didn't see the real need where we needed to go above up to that added 50% in this. Now, that's for the, the commercial ones are the ones where we've only had that actually request being made. Doesn't mean that it had to be purely the, the commercial signs, but I think the, the sign standards are pretty reasonable as they are in terms of the size that's already permitted for, even if it is not just commercial, but for the other uses that are in there, the residential uses and the, we have in there, the office uses in the, in those PUDs and planned shopping districts. And just looking at that record of, you know, we don't really see it really becoming a situation where we're going to have to allow for somebody to increase above the hundred square feet, let's say in the, in the case of the commercial one. So that's kind of our thought, it's just, because once they see that, that section there, they go right for it. I gotta give TJ Maxx, they, I give them a little credit, they were kind of trying to play it off like, well, we're not going to do, it's not the 50%, we're going to go 26%. But they're getting a, a nice freestanding sign as well out there on 31, so you're going to be able to see them from 31, no matter what happens on the, the building itself.
Lot more exposure than they were in the mall.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, I just turned by there today, you can see their sign pretty clearly.
And I think, quite frankly, you know, we were talking about the signs in general are, you know, with the advent of, you know, everybody having smartphones and, you know, knowing where they're going, the, really the need to have signs like in order to capture market is probably not as important. As a matter of fact, when you look now at some of these national retailers, it's almost like a style to not even have extravagant signs as part of, that almost becomes kind of gaudy to their design of the building, so they like to sell the icon, you know, you think of like a Starbucks, alls they have to have is that, that green seal out there and people are like, okay, I know what that, I see that little green seal, I know that's, you know, coffee or McDonald's just has the, the golden arches, like they almost kind of refine some of their signs because it's a little bit more appropriate for the sign, you know, their overall design and the image that they're trying to convey, so, you know, it's not to say you, you wouldn't get the big pressure to get the big signs, but I think the need to have signs to the extent that they, you know, used to be historically are probably not as needed. And we do, again, still allow for those freestanding signs in addition to the wall signs, so.
Good. Need one more.
And then the kind of biggest section that we looked at was subsection N, which is the signs always permitted, which we wanted to include exempt signs. This is kind of what we focused on is like the most, this probably had the most content-based language in it. So kind of focusing on this as a, like, just kind of rewriting as much as possible to try to write it in a kind of content neutral way. Track changes can be difficult to follow along in printed form, but this is where kind of calling out specifically, like one category we added here was like governmental signs, a sort of an exempt thing. If this is something that is placed by the government as part of its duties to protect public health, safety, and welfare, then it's sort of outside the scope of this ordinance, like your emergency and warning signs, like that shouldn't count towards a amount of signage, something like that. Reference specific laws, which we wanted to put in as sort of, if they're state laws, not only they'd be exempt, they'd almost be superseded, or they would supersede our own ordinance, like this is, this is not the township sign ordinance to deal with, and identifying location of public facilities or essential services. So kind of putting them all in a category doesn't necessarily refer to the content unless it's health, safety, and welfare specifically, but referencing laws sort of, just sort of removes that question. The sort of big category, though, which is probably the easiest to visualize, is striking something like a real estate sign, political sign, calling them all yard signs. And right now, they all have slightly different square footages. I think construction sign was another one, but like a sign that you would put in your yard, no matter what it says, there really needs to be a standard kind of square footage for all of the, or standard regulation for all of those, all of those things. So this is an attempt to try to condense those regulations from kind of three items into one and to call them all yard signs. Otherwise, it was, a lot of this was just kind of cleaning up specific language and proposing it, so.
Now, you, by condensing those, you, it doesn't leave a loophole for like a business to be putting out those signs on the weekends and stuff, does it?
Um, so there's a couple of things. So there would, there would need to be a, and we can or probably should write it specifically, like a business putting out like lawn signs or yard signs out, like on the weekend.
Yeah, when you drive around, you see A1 Concrete throws them around every, they know you guys don't work on Friday, so
Right.
Thursday night, they run around, they put signs all over the township and then we go, we send our code enforcement people around, pick them all up.
And there'd be two things with that. One, if they're in the right of way, we already prohibit signs in the right of way.
Right.
So that should continue. The other thing could be, commercial has, you could limit size, spacing, since they already typically will get a freestanding permanent sign, the additional signage could be limited in some way.
It usually doesn't anywhere near their actual business. In fact, they might be a business out of their home, you know?
Right, right.
There's a new, the new one I see a lot of is a, somebody does gutters and roofing and, you know, I see those all over Silver Lake Road recently, so, you know, that's, they looked, at a glance, you would think it was a political sign, but it's not, it's they're advertising their business, and those have always been prohibited. It's temporary, you know, advertisement signs.
Right, right.
I would hate to leave the, you know, remove something that leaves something like that
Right.
accidentally allowable, you know, so.
And supposedly there are fewer, like, in looking at language that's tried to, or in looking at resources that have tried to distill these like court cases, there's less protection for commercial speech than non-commercial speech. But even some of those regulations have been found to be content-based. I think one of these was actually in Michigan, it was Troy, that was one of these cases that was cited, so if there's a way to kind of distinguish between that, because you're absolutely right, and like, what would stop someone from like putting a commercial sign like in a residential area? It could be their own business, it could be somebody else's, or it could be someone like paying someone, like, hey, put these signs up and take a selfie with.
Oh, you see it, when somebody has their driveway sealed, the, the company will put it up there while they're working there, but usually it goes away when they leave or whatever. A construction company's building a new home, they'll
Right.
Put their sign up, and that's all under that other category, but in generally, you're right, Steve, it's in the right of way. It's usually right on the corner.
Right.
You know, the, the clear area, South Airport and Silver Pines is a popular area, they like to stick them there and so on, so, I mean, I just, I would just hate to leave a loophole where there's something like that, oh, look, now they, they're not prohibiting this, so, because it's not being prohibited, now it's allowed, so.
Right, right.
Just be careful of that, it would be all, so.
I'm wondering if, because I'm thinking now that these yard signs, maybe we need to define that, the actual sign itself from the standpoint of where you could have a yard stand, yard sign and a freestanding sign in a commercial district. And I'm wondering if it's a, can we, I mean, if we defined it and then, or somehow recognize yard signs versus a freestanding sign? Or something to that effect, I'm not sure. It'd probably be based on the number of signs. Not sure, but, because we're, under yard signs, I just want to make sure that it doesn't, if you put up a freestanding sign as part of your business and then have these other yard signs down below it, that, that you're, you know, you're exceeded.
Permanent, maybe a permanent sign. The business is going to have a permanent sign rather than
Yeah.
Just a freestanding sign.
I just want to make sure we understand the difference between a yard sign and a freestanding sign that's permit for a business.
Well, as Joe mentioned, construction, is that a yard sign now? The, the builder is going in, he's building a house and he's putting his sign temporarily in the yard while that house is being built. Some of those signs are much bigger than a yard sign
Mm-hmm.
Size. Are we going to limit those down to a yard size, yard sign size?
Well, under this, it would, let's say it's in a commercial district, it would be limited to 16 square feet in area under this, because we would, the way this is written, it would be eliminating the construction signage, which allows right now up to 32 squ, 32 square feet.
This would be in a generally residential area.
Yeah. Well, in the residential, it's even less.
Eight square feet.
It's eight square feet.
Yeah, but now you, you've got these builders with the big wooden sign, that's their trademark, they use that. We're not going to allow that
I think, from what I'm seeing, is that we have to treat them all the same somehow, or at least address them in a content neutral way. And here in, whoops, sorry. And herein lies the challenge.
Yeah.
For that exact reason, sorry about that.
Right.
I mean, we could take a look at, you know, one thing might help for us is to maybe take a look at some existing situations where we see those signs out and about and maybe get some idea of what size they are and that type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Same with realtors, they, sometimes will do, a lot of times, it's just a yard sign type size, you know, with two metal stakes that go into the ground, but sometimes it's a wooden post and a hanging, pretty good size
Mm-hmm.
Something.
Yeah, it would, it would, and really, the way this would be doing it would be based on whether you're in like the R districts, R1, R2, R3, RR, or are you in a commercial district, agricultural district, industrial district, would be kind of the two sizes, with the residential being eight square feet, those other ones being 16, so. We can, you know, we can take a look at, you know, what some of those are, so.
Kind of stress testing it, yeah.
A couple of questions. I was not here at the study session in July, so I apologize if I'm asking any questions that were already asked and didn't make it into the minutes, but I also read the memo or article that was written by those lawyers in Lansing. Is that, is it based on that memo that staff is trying to revise our ordinance to comply with things that are being mentioned there, or has anybody updated that, or have we got independent legal review, or is this so far the, the legal review that we're going off of?
This was sort of the first pass based on that and some other resources. I was trying to find, like, has someone put together a model ordinance yet? And that proved to be elusive. I think other communities are struggling with this, too, so, and I think not all the court cases are done yet. A lot of them like have dated back now five, almost 10 years, but I think there's still some pending resolution to some of these things, too.
There's always going to be.
Yeah.
That was, actually, one of my questions, I guess, or a little bit of a concern is, I, I see that memo and I read it and I think it was good, what I saw, but it's three years old.
Yeah.
And at least a couple of the articles, they talked about a case is up for certiorari to the US Supreme Court and they may or may not resolve some conflict. If that was true three years ago, there may be some things that are unknowns in this memo that are now known if the right person looked at it. I'm not the right person, I don't.
Right.
Yeah, that's why we were trying, it's really hard for us to find information out there now, but like our approach right now is, let's see what we can do as staff and then get it to a point, then if we're fairly, like, we've kind of gone our course and we really can't do any much more, then at that point, have legal counsel take a look at it at that point. So we're just trying to do some, some legwork essentially before we, but, yeah, we're having
Before a full legal review, like that.
Yeah.
I think it'd be worth following up with the, that group of lawyers, is they've done webinars for MTA before, that's how we found them in the first place?
Well, that was
Even just following up, like, do you have an updated version of this memo from three years ago? Has anything else been resolved?
Yeah, and I, I don't know if there's somebody that claims to be the legal beagles that are statewide sign experts. If so, that'd be probably the most efficient place to go rather than elsewhere. I just, I was curious, and I noticed that at the end of this, it was, this was written by two lawyers named Matthew Stokes and Jacob Witty, and just for yucks, I did a little looking up, and Witty got his license in Michigan in 2018, so he'd been a lawyer in Michigan at least, and he could have come from somewhere else, but if he didn't, he might have only been out of law school for three years when this article's written. The other guy, Stokes, isn't even still with that law firm.
Okay.
And he only got his license in Michigan in 2020. So it, it looks good from what I'm seeing, but it looks like it was also, it was authored by somebody that's one year with a Michigan license and the other guy's got a three-year, that's kind of green. So I, I would love to see somebody that's really got the credentials saying, rely on this.
What's MTA? Is MTA doing anything about any of this?
That's what, like, we were looking for some, at least, even if they weren't model ordinances, but something that somebody could point to and say, you know, this, this, here's a, and, and we really haven't found that.
Yeah, didn't find anything through MTA or Michigan Association of Planning. I know it's coming from time to time, but Yeah, didn't find anything through MTA or, uh, Michigan Association of Planning. I know it's coming from time to time, uh, but, uh, we could check. When there's the state conference next month, but also I, I emailed folks at MSU Extension, um, like they didn't have like that kind of like buttoned up. Like, no one has figured out like the ultimate, uh, ordinance solution to this yet, um. But seeing like what some of those, I think even just testing, like, it'd be good to find someone to just even kind of test some of these situations. Like we're seeing, well, yeah, some places have the, some construction companies have this, like, there's other communities where they probably have that too. It's like, have anyone tried to do your signed ordinance? What happened, uh, when you tried to do that?
We can kind of take this out and see how this would play out. Like, for instance, we can check with Mike Green, he does his, uh, the sign permits to see what, you know, what type of permits are we getting? How would they fit into this? We can also kind of do an inventory, go out into around the township and take a look at what some of these sign situations are, whether they're construction signs, real estate signs, et cetera. And just, we can kind of see, here, here we have some kind of rough standards. How would this play out in, if this were to actually be enacted? Would kind of give us a sense of, uh, what that, you know, what, what impact would this have, or, you know, what would be the repercussions of this?
And it's sort of the season of political signs too. You can see what proliferation we're getting and like who's got a particularly large sign in their yard or anything like that.
Those come and go, but I, I think we all get a little apoplectic about the fact that some of the things that we don't think we want. May become allowed if, if they're invalid because they're so-called content, they're not content neutral. And if that's the way it is, that's the way it is, but it doesn't sound like most of us would be very happy if we got to start allowing things that we've historically not allowed. Because they're running afoul of this constitutional stuff, so if there's a way, and maybe over a little more time and thought. This Reed case has been around for a little while. Maybe some brilliant lawyers have thought of some way kind of around some of the problems that were hamstringing municipalities. Based on, sounds like that drastically threw out a whole bunch of ordinances, so.
It absolutely did.
Maybe somebody has figured out a way around it. We just don't know what it is yet, but if it costs us a couple bucks to figure that out, I, I mean, we'd be sorely disappointed if we end up tweaking our own ordinance. And then we get clobbered by somebody because they, they, they bit our pants off because they know the, the legal rulings better than we do. So someday, we, we, I would hope we would do that, but yeah, it's, you're at step one. I don't know what, at what point the city town should spend money on.
I mean, I don't see us really going much beyond this at this point.
Yeah, I think trying to figure out, um, I think I thought was to try to work through as much as we could. And have some like draft language that could get legal review, rather than like start with legal review. Uh, cause like we knew there were definitely some content-based things in here, as in every sign ordinance in America. But just sort of a lack of, uh, like, there's no like model ordinance out there, but, uh, I mean, we've got, we have colleagues around the state we can call on for, like, has someone figured this out? Uh, yet, uh, with their own municipal attorneys and planners? Uh, I think it's good, cause it's, yeah, we don't want to create situations, uh, we kind of, we need to like stress test this essentially. Let's walk through like. Uh, what if someone tried to do this sign? Could they do it? Could they not? We don't want them to have this type of sign. Could they do it or not, based on how we end up writing it?
Are we talking about permanent signs or is it all kind of lumped under the temporary sign? I mean, it's, cause temporary signs are the ones we've traditionally really guarded against are the temporary ones. The, you know, yeah, the political signs, we looked the other way and, you know, real estate's allowed, construction's allowed, but it's the, it's the person trying to advertise their business or event that. In a temporary basis is what we've really guarded against because we knew that would just clutter things up. I remember a few years ago, you know, there was a huge craft show in Petoskey and they had their signs all over Garfield Township directing people to Petoskey to this craft show. I'm like, really? I mean, that's, that's a stretch, I would think, you know, specifically at, at South Airport and 31 in front of, uh, Buffalo Wild Wings. There's a great big sign for, you know, this craft show in Petoskey. I thought that was unusual, but those are the signs, I guess, in my mind, I'm talking about. Now, the, the construction guy that puts a sign out there for six months to a year while he's building the house, that's, you know, he, he's, nobody's going to complain about that, I don't think, you know.
I think this is talking about some permanent signs too. It's got sections on billboards and, I mean, I, I really think we're struggling with if we've got to eliminate certain of these things because somebody's going to argue they're content-based. I'm looking at the memo you guys did a, a month ago, um, report 2024-54, but one of the things that you're concerned about is, is, uh, signs on somebody's house that have address numbers and street names. I mean, if we got to start banning that because it's not content-neutral, we got problems.
So the way we addressed that in this one, um, was just referring to it in a different way. Which we put a category of signs which are necessary for public health, safety and welfare, including but not limited to. And we put address numbers as required by Grand Traverse County's street and road naming and address ordinance. So yeah, just referring to it, that refers to a law, not the content.
But some of that, I just, at first blush, I'm reading this, I'm thinking, we can't do that. We got to figure out a way to be able to do that.
Yeah. And in that case, it's an exemption, not a, like, we're not privileging certain speech over other speech. We're saying everyone needs to have an address number. We're going to count like yard signs towards like your amount of signage. The address numbers don't count towards that. As long as that's clear that that's what that is, uh, something like that.
Looked like you were concerned about putting in no hunting or no trespassing signs.
Same as like signs necessary for public health, safety and welfare. That is a, that is a necessary thing. Yeah.
There's got to be a way to finesse it.
Exactly.
I think you started off by saying we could spend weeks and all day and weeks and years talking about signs and it's, uh, yeah, not, not tonight.
We will take a look though for those signs that you're talking about, Joe, cause I know those are the ones that are probably the most.
Yeah.
Are the ones that just kind of pop up like weeds everywhere.
If you just all of a sudden have to allow those, or the ordinance allows them, you're probably going to see a tremendous amount of those, you know. So we, we spent a lot of time, you know, we've spent a lot of time and do spend a lot of time limiting or maybe limiting is not right word, but determining what's allowed for a development or a business or whatever. I would hate to see that, uh, you know, some of that gets thrown out, so. Off, off topic or on topic, did they, were you going to respond from Seven Brew for their motion sign? Did Mike ever hear, I know he was writing them a letter.
I think.
They got a motion sign?
I pulled, it was gassing up over to Mutual about three weeks ago or a month ago now, and if Seven Brew had a full motion, he may have been watching a movie on their screen there. I mean, and, uh, full LED motion sign, so Steve, it was, Mike was writing him a letter that day.
Yeah, I think he sent him, I think they did, I think it did get resolved. We'll double check with them, but I'm pretty sure that did get resolved and I think that.
Well, I think when it was approved, it was supposed to be static.
Yeah.
It was lighted, but it was supposed to be a static sign, maybe changed once a day or twice a day, but it was, I mean, it was basically, you were watching a, a full, watching a, I was sitting there trying to pull it out, like, wow, that's a, that's a nice, uh, movie I'm watching, but that's not allowed in our ordinance, so. The wrong person, I guess, was gassing up that day, so hopefully it got fixed.
Yeah, I believe, yeah, I know you sent something and I believe it did get resolved. Uh, I was by the, I didn't specifically look at that sign, but I haven't heard anything since then, so I'm hoping it got resolved then.
All right, well, more to come on this for sure, so, yeah, go ahead.
Do you, do you want to talk about any of those other bullet points about whether to have the planning director up to six signs or to remove that provision about wall signs or?
Yeah, when you think about that, I mean, I just kind of threw that out there, just, I thought, just for the administrative review, but it doesn't really, I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I just kind of threw it out there, cause I just thought sometimes we can streamline the process, but, and the same thing with the, the 50%, I'm thinking. I don't know if it's really needed based on what we've seen over the last several years.
Yeah, I, I don't know, maybe we should all weigh in on that. My first thought on the, the no, no modifications for the wall signs, I think I agree with your reasoning that it's not been granted and I think you were right. Almost impossible standards we had, so I'm okay with taking that out. I, I guess I'm, I'd be prepared to listen and understand why, but. I'm always a little leery of doing much more administratively than, than we're doing. And it's no knock on you guys. You guys are great, but you're not going to be here forever. And the people in those chairs aren't always fabulous, and so I'd hate to have the commission delegate something that maybe the commission shouldn't be delegating.
Right.
That's fair. You're resurrecting that's, that sign plan you're talking about. We do a lighting plan, we do a parking plan. Why do a sign plan? You know, that, that, we did all this signing out of the way as part of the review of the project and we're done with it. We don't have to revisit it.
Yeah, and they probably still could under this, but in that case, it's Copper Ridge, which has been around for a while, so the review of it was decades ago at this point, yeah, so.
I mean, but I mean, you could involve Mike in, in that review. He could review the sign plan for us on a development in terms of if it fits the ordinance. And then, then we don't have to, how many times have we had a developer come back and say, okay, well now we'd like a sign for this and a sign for that? Well, if the sign plan's done with the PUD, it's done. We just say, you know, or it's amendment to the PUD if you want to come back and change it.
Or like an amendment to the sign plan, part of the PUD, like, we zoomed in on one person's or one building's directional sign. It's like, well, does every building have that or is every building going to have that? Like, you should just sort of propose that now and put them all on a plan of some kind. If that plan is attached to that PUD at that point, then, yeah, which is fine. And it ultimately ended up being straightforward, but I was like, I guess just when we received it, it was like, this is a single six-foot sign that's going to the planning commission. This seems pretty small.
A few over the years where we, we got in a project and about the time they're open up, they're coming back to us on a first sign request of some sort. I remember the T-Mobile and the T-Mobile, I guess it's over this way, T-Mobile and this coffee and all that, that came back to us not long after it was approved.
One of the things that, and I don't, I wasn't around when they had the sign plans or, but I know more recently, one thing we've been wanting to make clear is that they have, uh. Statements in this, in the site plan when they come through that, you know, sign permit is separate. The reason we do that is because sometimes they'll have drawings in there that'll show a sign in there, and I think that's why we put that in.
It's good.
They're like, well, it's in the site plan. We're like, well, what do you mean the site plan? Well, look on sheet, you know, 10, and you see some rendering of the building and there's a sign on it. So that's why we deal with them separately and I, you know, I think the sign plan makes sense to the extent that the only challenge is, is that some, when these businesses kind of come and go. It can be a little, it can be a little hassle to try to go back to that, everybody having a specific sign plan. It's a lot easier to go to section 630 in the ordinance and, and deal with it that way, but, uh, that's one of the reasons why we've kind of made everybody put in those statements. Signs are under separate approval, so they don't sneak anything by us.
If I recall correctly, I think Art Van was one of those. That's how they got a larger one.
That's how they got their big sign, is it was part of the, the, the face of the building that was approved, it was drawn on there. I think you're right, so, yeah.
So if there's a way to do that, um, I mean, we could take a look, if there's a way to do it also like content-neutral in terms of like businesses coming and going, like if. Uh, who's your two weeks at? Thurlby Clinic, like, if they someday move out of there and someone else moves in, presumably someone can just put their name on this sign structure that they're going to make to put that sign up there. Like, I don't know if that would specifically be, have to come back, or if it were part of a overall sign plan, it's like, this is just the building entrance signs that are going to be there, no matter who's in it. So if there's a way to write it, like, yeah, we can take a look, or if it was in and was taken out for some reason, kind of do some digging to why was the section removed? Or why is this no longer part of the ordinance? Probably some reason, so. So yeah, more to, more to come on that, as always.
I'm good, thanks.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on the sign piece? Good start. I liked the conversation. All right, well, if we're done with signs, we'll move on to new business. I don't see anything listed on our new business. Anybody have any new business tonight? Public comment? I do not see any public, so if nobody objects, I'll open and close public comment. And brings us to other business. Anything else to come before the board tonight? Uh, see a few items for our next meeting, September 11th, uh, French Manor Public Hearing for their major amendment. Tower North, uh, communication facility, follow-up on that. K1 Speed, uh, in slash High Tops, a site plan review amendment.
Yeah, that's, uh, just kind of give you an update on that. Uh, so K1 was approved by the planning commission back in, uh, December of 2022. And that's, from my understanding, is actually operating. I think they had a soft opening last Friday, from what I heard. I don't know for certain, but I think they're having a grand opening here sometime soon. So that's the former Sears, you know, that was maybe a little more than a third of the square footage, maybe, I don't know, maybe close to half. So there's a good portion of it to the backside and that's where High Tops, um, bar restaurant is going in, but they're also including a nightclub. It's, uh, 20, the total, it's, it's substantial. It's 27,000 square feet between the bar, restaurant and a nightclub there. So that'll be coming to the planning commission. Uh, at the same time, we did receive a initial site plan for the Cherryland Center. We responded back. Uh, it's basically coming from the owner, Kumar, who owns the Yonkers and the Big Lots and everything. And, uh, there's, there's a lot that needs to, to be addressed on that, so that's, uh, not coming to the planning commission yet. But what I'd like to do is I've, we've done a completeness review on it and want them to address some things, also alter some design layouts. Like to have that shared with, make sure that all the, the three primary owners have had a chance to look at it. And making sure that we kind of have it buttoned up before it comes to the planning commission, so, uh, I think there's some, we'll see where that stands. It's, it's not ready to come in front of the planning commission yet for the September 11th, so maybe they'll have it ready for the October meeting. I don't know, so.
I got a question for you on the High Tops and K1. So it's all going to be part of one big area?
It's, uh, well, essentially splitting the building in half, more or less. There'll be some remainder that will be kind of white boxed out and not used. Uh, but I would say probably it covers roughly 80% of the building between the two. Uh, K1, they will be separated. You can't walk in between them. You'll have to go outside.
You're not going to be able to sit at the bar, have yourself a couple of gin and tonics, then go get on these little cars and go drive around.
No, it'll be, it'll be, uh, they'll be separate. Now, the K1 has a, their main entrance is the front of the building kind of facing South Airport in, in Garfield. But they also have a back entrance. Uh, High Tops would strictly have a back entrance, so, but they are, they are separated from that standpoint.
Did High Tops get a liquor license? Do they have?
They do. They have a Class C license. They originally were going to go into the former Jonathan B Pub space there at the mall, Grand Traverse Mall, and then they moved to this location.
So the entrance to this large humongous nightclub would be on the backside where the residences are? Wonderful. I think we got stuff to talk about.
Yes, that's probably my, that was, uh, my, my first thought in terms of if there are challenges to this is.
They're worried about the dog park.
You said this High Tops and K1 would be about half of the former Sears building there, or it'd be?
Collectively, they're probably about 80% of the square foot. Yeah, I mean, uh, High Tops, 27,000 square feet. I think, uh, K1 is somewhere around close to 40,000 square feet. So I think that that building's somewhere around 80 to 90 square, thousand square feet, so.
And then the last thing, Meadow Valley PUD directional sign review. Remind me, is Meadow Valley, which one's?
Oakleaf, Oakleaf out there in North Long Lake Road by, yeah. We approved it as Oakleaf and then they call it Meadow Valley, but then they still call it Oakleaf. I'm always like, I don't understand the.
It was originally named Oakleaf.
Originally Oakleaf, correct.
To be more, uh, user-friendly and attractive, they, they changed the name to Meadow Valley.
I like Oakleaf better.
I'm surprised, you know, as much, you know, we've talked about over the last couple of years, you know, single-family homes and the opportunity, you know, is any movement on this Meadow Valley PUD? The whole south part of that's supposed to be single-family homes.
No, it's out there, it's listed right now, um, and, but no, we have not, uh, we've had some choirs, oh, can we change that and make that all multifamily? We've had those, but, uh.
Yeah, it's too bad.
And then actually, I know. And then actually, I know, a building official, Carl, just reported within the last month or so that I think he only had 14 single-family permits this year. It's one of the lowest years ever.
There's no lots, you have buildings in Garfield.
Well, the price per square foot's so high right now. You can get a bar in front of 400 square foot right now.
Yeah.
And, you know, you, 400 bucks a square foot, you build a 2,000 square foot home, you're talking $800,000, that's, that used to be a mansion, not that many years ago.
Good luck for the young family.
Yeah.
The one that we're seeing, some movement, I was down by Burmley. You've got Traditions and Burmley Hills and Burmley Meadows. Burmley Hills has moved over to permitting. They were closing out some final things on our side of the review as follow-up to conditions from that approval, but they've now started construction over on that side. And then I think he said he was going to get stuff from Meadows here in short order as well, so.
And that's Kreisik?
Yeah. Yep, so, one half of that is at least on the permitting side now, yeah.
All right. Okay, looks like we got a full agenda next time.
I'd make a motion, we adjourn.